We're recording and we are broadcasting. We're live, it's your meeting, sir.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:02 on Monday evening, the 9th of November. The public may watch this meeting via Zoom. Roll call by the clerk, please.
Carrie McGee?
Yeah.
Greg LaBosse here?
Here.
Harry Cody is absent. Ann Dixon? Ann Dixon?
Here.
Deb Bacon?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, I ask if we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will lead. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, under God, indivisible, with justice for all. The next item on the agenda will be an approval of the town council minutes on October 26. We've had a chance to look them over. If there are no questions or comments, the chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a second, all in favor, Madam Clerk.
Mr. McGee, I do have one comment, please.
Okay, well now will be the time of your comment, please.
There is a spelling error on page 15 of 43, it's the word discussion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, duly noted. Madam Clerk, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Carrie McGee?
Yes.
Greg LaBosse here?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Deb Bacon?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk, would be A4, would you be so kind?
Speeches by outgoing council members focusing on past actions of the council only. No business that is pending will be discussed.
Mr. President, if I may, because of what came out today, do you want to postpone this until next week? And make it the last full meeting?
You know what, this was going to be mainly if Mr. LaBosse there was going to want to have a speak. Would you rather give it now, Mr. LaBosse, or would you wait because we are going to have another full meeting?
I was just, again, I appreciate you looking to, you know, to give me the opportunity because it's usually it's been the tradition of the president on his last night to do an outgoing message, but with the terms that we've served, we've been there a long time. So I was just hoping to, I was hoping just to say it, but no, we can wait.
You can say it too, it doesn't matter, Mr. LaBosse, if you want to say it, or if you're prepared to say it, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, again, it's just some of my, you know, some of my thoughts and thanks for, and I certainly wanted to stay away from the final night not to interrupt the proceedings and take it away from, anything away from the people that are going to be coming onto the council, et cetera. But if you wouldn't mind, I would love to continue, and that way we don't have to take up any more time on a future meeting with my ramblings.
Absolutely.
All right, I appreciate it. Well, thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me the opportunity to address the people of the evening. I would like to thank my wife Nancy, my children Dane and Mara, my mom and dad, for standing firmly behind me for as many years that I've been in and every step of the way, okay? I would like to thank the voters of District 2. It's been my honor and pleasure to serve as your councilman these past eight years, but prior to that, another three and a half, so I'm just shy of 12 years, okay? I'd also like to thank all of the managers that have been, you know, that have served the town in the past, that I've been there, department heads, and the hardworking folks employed by the town. Thank you all for your service. I'm sorry I can't name and thank everyone individually, but I especially have to thank two people for the guidance and helping me get through some very difficult decisions, and as well as all of us. I'd like to thank Ed Wazika, I really think that Ed stepped up at a time that we really needed him and has gone above and beyond, thank you very much, Ed, I really appreciate all your hard work.
You're welcome.
And the other one is, you know, I can, you know, call him friend now, but seeing the work, Nick Orm, thank you very much for really helping the town out in, with your diligence and hard work through a lot of the legal issues and things that we've had, I appreciate that very, very much. And I think that both of you have given the town and the council exceptional guidance. I'm proud to say that the presently sitting council, and again, not known specifically, but I think this may be the only truly independent council in the history of Coventry, in our long history. It's always been, quote, "controlled by one party or the other," Republican, Democrat. Again, only, you know, my experience always goes back so far, but we've been truly an independent council. And I think that, I think that, I'm proud of that. And I'm also proud of the fact that myself and Mr. McGee were two of the first three people elected to serve four-year terms at the last charter change, and we've served two of those together, completed two of those terms. I don't know, I hope I can make it to December 14th, you know, to complete my second term, okay? But there's been, there've been a lot of issues, so many issues over the years that I want to recall, some that were difficult, unpopular, many of them contentious, but nonetheless, we as a council took the necessary actions to keep the town moving forward. Some people agreed, some people didn't agree, and I can appreciate and respect all of their opinions. And before I mention any of the things, the issues there, I especially want to thank my colleagues presently and in the past for your time, for the votes that you placed. And even though our opinions and votes at different, have, you know, very different outcomes and have been different at times, I think that we all stood firmly in our positions with integrity. I hope that you feel the same way about me, because I feel that way about all of the people that I serve with. I think you make your stands and all the correct and for the right reasons. No one said the democratic process was going to be easy, okay? These are some of the issues that, from over the years, many of them are still ongoing and they probably always will.
You don't want to speak about them, Greg. If it's an ongoing issue, I wouldn't bring it up on this.
All right, some of the issues that, again, that we've dealt with in the past and may have to make decisions, and I won't, I have no, I am not going to elaborate on any of these things, just issues that I think that as a council, we certainly took the bull by the horns with a number of them, okay? Number one is the pension funding, the police, municipal, and SRP. We made unpopular decisions to fully fund those, and we had to do. Another issue, the landfill remediation, that's an accomplishment. I think we finished it ahead of time as a member of councils. We instituted the automated refuse and recycling. The Anthony and the Harris mills were developed. The Batuxa River stabilization, the Laurel Avenue Bridge that had been done. That was a $2.7 million grant that came into the town for, you know, by numerous people who served the town in legislative capacities. We've had a lot of commercial development, I'm not going to go list all the, you know, all the different businesses, but over the years, if people said we need to get commercial development, and there are quite a few of them here listed that are fairly new, that developed new places in town and have invested in this town, and I'm sure that the new council will continue that trend of trying to develop the town. We had very difficult times, still difficult decisions and issues regarding the wind turbines and the solar arrays. We've had a lot of residential development, a lot of growth over the years that we've been here. And it looks to be in the eight years, approximately 500 building permits. So we've added 500 new homes or more in the last eight years. That's some pretty, you know, substantial growth that's been going on. The Center of New England has been a, you know, has been a bane of our existence when it should have been the boom for our town. I'm very hopeful that going forward, because of the coming out of receivership, that that will move in that direction. And I hope the new council takes that bull by the horns and runs with it. One of the other issues that happened in these last eight years, the CCFD receivership. That was a very big issue that the council did numerous things that we had to do. We have a new police station and human services facility. We had roads and bridges redone. Let me see, Chrome Books, high school sports complex, sidewalks on Reservoir Road, a black sticky substances, if we remember that. Of course, budget after budget, have been issues, and we've all worked at them. We've had revaluation issues, Johnson's Pond issues, which might be coming. COVID-19, the sewers are going to be there and they'll always be there, the issues. And the last one that I hope they can get out of Zoom are these Zoom meetings and back into person-to-person. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate it, thank you to all the voters at Coventry.
Thank you, Greg, I appreciate that, and same in my echo of my sentiments to you, it's an impressive work we use, so thank you for the comments. The next item on the agenda.
Excuse me, President McGee. Mrs. Bacon, would you, do you want to say, give a speech tonight, or do you want to wait till the next meeting? Not leaving you out.
Yeah, I haven't heard, I didn't know if you were prepared to do something tonight, you're more than welcome to, Mr. Bacon.
Well, mine's just going to be very short and sweet. I just want to thank you, by the way, Carrie, and thank you, Ed. It's been an honor to serve the people of District 5 for the past four years. I have thoroughly enjoyed it. I also want to thank all of my supporters and my, especially my family, my husband, my children. I know that they are not going to miss when I have to miss their birthdays or our anniversary for a town council meeting, so do look forward to actually going out for my anniversary. I especially want to thank Nick and Ed for all my questions I've asked. I know I ask a lot of questions. I also want to thank all the town employees that I've, you know, I've asked questions and, you know, all the supporting documentation. I do know that may have caused a little more work for them, but I do appreciate it, and I think the public certainly does appreciate it, having those documents attached to our agendas. I also want to thank our police department, they have been delivering our packets to our homes. I want to thank them and tell them to say safe every evening. And I just want to wish the new council members all the best and good luck to them, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilwoman.
I would keep it short and sweet, we have the Patriots coming on, so let's get going.
Okay, there's a story and then there's the real story.
Exactly, let's get going.
We'll get to what's two losing teams play tonight, I say that, all right. My side, Councilwoman Bacon, appreciate it. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk, would be B1, please.
Application for new victualling license, new owner, JSC New England Operating LLC, doing business as Burger King, 1145 Tyo Avenue.
Mr. Wazika, you want to let us know about this, please?
Ms. Joanne, do you want to just give them the basics, you've got the packet in front of you on them?
It's just a change of ownership, so they're just applying for the license to put it into their name.
Okay, I have seen there's been some work going on, I believe, is it, no, you're not Kristin Fonda, but it's just?
Patrick Higgins, Mr. President.
Okay, I believe Patrick Higgins, and I believe you are the owner, is that correct?
I'm the agent for the JSC Management, the owners are Russ, Jim and Sarah Camorelli out of New York, and Steve and Megan Ben. And they bought 47 Janko stores earlier this year, and we're in the process of getting everything changed over, and you're going to see a lot of remodels in the restaurants and modernizations and better customer service. We're doing the best we can.
We welcome you in town, obviously Burger King's been a staple in the community for quite a few years, and I'm glad to see that it's staying and, you know, we're rebuilding it, and I wish you the best of luck, and then you can pass that severance on to the owners also. I don't know if any council people have any comments or any questions, but it's pretty cut and dry. We just want you to continue doing business in town, so is there any councilman? Have any questions? All right, seeing none, if there's no questions on it, entertain a motion.
I might, Mr. President, I might add, zoning office has already given a positive recommendation on this, and the license won't be issued until we get from the police, we haven't received that yet, but we will, so it'll be held until we get that recommendation from the P-Day.
So I ask, whoever's making the motion, just to stipulate that we will not, until the police get the place.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we make a motion with the stipulation that it won't be? Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I make a second.
And we have a second, all in favor, Madam Clerk?
Carrie McGee?
Yes.
Greg LaBosse here?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Deb Bacon?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, once again, sir, thank you very much, keep your business in town.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk, is C1, please.
Tax assessors additions and abatements.
Okay, we've all had a chance to look at the list, which our tax assessor puts together very nicely for us to look over. Are there any questions or any comments concerning the list that we received? Yes, Madam, Mrs. Dixon?
Yes, I noticed that some of the reasons were given for each of the decisions, and one is the tax assessor appeal, could you just please describe what is the appeal process by which taxpayers go through?
A taxpayer will, by the way, Carrie is out this evening, so I'll be taking her instead. A taxpayer, when it comes to their assessments, if they believe that their assessment is incorrect, whether it's based upon the sale of a house or a change in locality, whatever it may be, a plethora of reasons, they apply to provide the tax assessor with an appeal request. It gets then to a board of review, and then the board then sells the board assessment review, then we use their claim, discusses that claim, and then takes a decision on how that should go. And then if the board approves it, then it moves forward. She can always go through and approve something that is basically, that is easily seen on her side as well, so that's the other process. That's, those are the two processes in which these things get put on.
Is there any appeal process if the decision is not in favor of the taxpayer? Other than once a decision is made by the board of review?
If the tax assessor does not find it in favor of the resident, then usually then it goes up to the board of review.
Okay, and they are the final decision maker?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you both for that, John.
Just one little addition, after the tax assessment board of review gives its decision, Councilwoman Dixon, you can apply to Superior Court if you're unsatisfied with their decision, so.
Okay, thank you for that. That being said, the chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve abatements and additions.
You approved the abatements and the additions, do we have a second?
I second the motion.
And we have a second, all in favor, Madam Clerk?
Carrie McGee?
Yes.
Greg LaBosse here?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Deb Bacon?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Okay, motion carries, thank you, John, for that. Okay, the next item on the agenda is for public hearing. Madam Clerk, would you read what it's going to be about first, please?
Amendment to Coventry Code 106-6E, calculation of the fair share development fee, also known as the impact fee.
Okay, Mr. Wazika, before we actually open public hearing, will you give us an explanation of it, and then we can open up public hearing?
Well, actually, that's why I have John and Russ Crossman here. They're the ones who actually went and did all the calculations, worked this through, and developed these new numbers. So I'm going to let David give an overview of what it's about, and he can fill you in on where we are, why we're there.
Good evening, Dave.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council, Ed. So I think as the council is aware, the town of Coventry has a fair share development fee program. Basically, these are also known as impact fees. They're charges that are imposed on new developments in the town to fund all or a portion of the town's public facilities' capital improvements that are going to be impacted by the new development from which the funds are collected. Rhode Island General Law's 45-22.4-1 authorizes this, and it is set forth in the town's code of ordinances as the clerk just indicated at Section 106-6. So the state statute requires that a needs assessment be done every five years, and Director Crossman and Director Arnett and myself worked to put together a fair share development fee report that was under Director Crossman's signature. And basically, what that report does is it summarizes all of the capital improvements that are part of the budget process from all the town departments, and those totals are put together, and they are assessed over a set of categories that you see listed in the proposed amendment. You have law enforcement, parks and recreation, human services, public works, public schools, government center, sewers, and then other public facilities. So basically, how this works, and Director Arnett can talk about the specific numbers, but we took the capital improvement proposals from all the town departments, added that up, also took into consideration some bonded indebtedness and some other town development that had been planned over the years and not yet executed. We came, we developed the present value of those improvements, and the assessment is before you now in terms of what the categories are for each of these buildings. I'll just give you an example of how this works. The councilors just mentioned the new police station. Well, if we were doing the, if we were doing the impact fee review before that station was built, the cost of that build-out would have been included in the fair share fee report, because that's already been built, that's not an expense that we can recapture, or I should say, or capture. So I'd be happy to answer any questions relative to the enabling legislation or the ordinance. I think it's pretty straightforward, and thank you for the opportunity to give a presentation.
Okay, thank you, let me just ask you a quick question. I know we're required by law to do this every five years. Is it after you took all these figures and all these departments, you know, capital needs, and just figured out, it's considerably less, it's like $2,000 or less, or $1,500 less than the last one? So were we overcharging just the change in old bills and capital needs? Because I don't recall doing this in the last five years, I don't recall changing it. So how did that, how did it come apart that we, the decision to charge less?
My, I can tell you that there was an impact fee report that was developed in 2015, that was developed by Mr. Sprague at the time. I can't speak to, I can't speak to how that impacted the fee structure. What I can tell you is that the, these impact fees, at least for this next period of time, reflects the anticipated needs assessment that was done just recently. And as you know, every year, as part of the town's capital improvement plan, there are needs that are identified on an annual basis, and those are reviewed by the planning commission, reviewed by the council, and hopefully passed in a budget if that comes to fruition. This is more targeted to actual development. In other words, the creation of new residential properties is going to put a specific strain on certain town functions, so that's what these, that's what this report is designed to capture.
Okay, thank you, David, appreciate that. Are there any council members who have any questions, any concerns? Okay, wait a minute, we'll get to everybody, Councilwoman Bacon, you had your hand up first?
Yeah, David, I'm just trying to understand, does this have all of the housing developments that are in the prelim or in the master plan? Does this include all of the housing developments, the ones that are part of it?
So, so councillor, that's not how the report, that's not what drives the report. So what would happen is all of the housing development that's in the pipeline, those developments are liable to pay fair share development fees when they come up in the application process through planning, through the planning department. This actually works from the town's own assessment of needs based on information from town departments. For example, the police department feels that it may need to add five new police cars over the next, the next period of years.
I'm sorry, Dave, you broke up, you said the police would need to add, you know, if they would need.
Sure, so the way this, the way the report works is the town departments identify what their needs are in the foreseeable future. That's where the bottom line numbers come from that are in this report. So it's not, although the housing development projects will pay these fees, it's not the projects and the development that triggers the fee. What triggers the fee and the creation of the fee is the town's needs assessment that's done at the town department level.
So I, but shouldn't the housing development, we have a lot of developments that are going in right now, shouldn't that also be a driving factor? I mean, because, you know, if you're bringing in these multifamily homes, you know, it's going to be putting more on law enforcement, parks and rec, human services, public works, public schools, the library, sewers, if it's in that area, the, you know, the public facility. So I don't understand, we have, we have quite a few developments, so I don't understand, I mean, were all of these department heads, are they aware of all of these housing developments? Did, was that part of the process also? Are they aware of the magnitude of what we're looking at, at some of these developments? One in particular, I can think of, that was, you know, a lot larger than any of us anticipated.
So the short answer to that is, all of the department heads have to be looking at those things as a part of their regular, ongoing departmental reviews. So although, you know, I'm not a department head, I'm not, I'm not driving those numbers, I have to say that the information coming from the departments, which forms the basis of the data in this report, which also relies on census data and expectations with regards to expanding populations, those are all part of what the department heads are doing on an annual basis and multiple annual bases to identify their needs.
Well, thank you for that, but I want to make sure that, you know, especially some of these developments, I mean, we are adding a lot of housing developments. I want to make sure, especially with one house development, I mean, it's in the works and I can't, you know, we can't discuss with Center of New England, but, I mean, this could be very significant, and I really think we need to make sure that everyone is fully aware of what could happen, especially at Center of New England, because lowering this is very concerning. I want to make sure that all of the department heads, especially our schools and law enforcement, understand what we're looking at. I know the last time when we discussed, they weren't aware of it. So I really would like to make sure that they are fully aware of this, because I, right now, with all the people that we could be bringing to this town, I don't think we should be lowering this. It just doesn't reflect what the housing developments and the potential have at Center of New England, it does not reflect this to me.
Maybe we could have Mr. Crossman come on and explain, out of his words, how they derive from these figures again. I understand what Dave was talking about, how you're setting the tracks for the future housing developments and future things come in, but maybe another explanation from the planning department, which could explain also, maybe help clarify a little bit, is Russ still on?
I am, Mr. President, thank you.
Yes, would you be so kind?
Sure, so let me just explain what Dave and I did when we worked on this. Sure, so let me just explain what Dave and I did when we worked on this. We reached out to every single director that was preparing a budget and at the same time they were preparing a budget, they prepared a capital improvement budget. That capital improvement budget was projected out for the next five years. Okay, so what we did, as again, this is supposed to be updated every five years. So, we took those five-year projections and that's the baseline that we, and we told all the department heads what we were doing, what we were looking for, that we were kind to come up with an assessment to re, to relook at the fair share development fees. They gave us what they submitted to the council for their numbers for the, for their, their capital improvement budgets. So, those numbers are what we had to use to come up with this fair share development fee. The number of subdivisions, the number of ones that have master plan preliminary at the pre-application stage, that does not come into effect as to the setting of this fair share development. Unfortunately, I wish it did because the councilwoman is correct, we have quite a bit coming down. But we have to look at what the town has for expenses and which are all outlined in that, this program. So, that's what we were constricted with to come up with these figures. And David, is that correct? Do you agree with me?
Yes, yes, I agree. The, the, what we, what we're working with are departmental expenditures and, and planned departmental expenditures over a five-year period. So, I can't speak, I can only say that a department, you know, a department head has to be aware of what's coming down the pike in terms of increased stress on the town facilities and I have to expect that those expectations were baked into the numbers that were provided to us by the department heads.
Right, and I don't think we could change those numbers without them presenting a new capital budget to the, to town council.
I mean, I see where it's concerning because in 10 years, I don't think this has changed since I've been on the council. I think it's been the same, the 7,500 basically.
To be honest, I don't know that it's ever been changed, Mr. President, since it's in action.
It has everything else is going up and up in value and cost, it's just hard to, I mean, I understand what you're saying, that it comes by what's submitted for capital needs and so on, but I mean, with the potential development that we have, Councilwoman Bacon has a point, I mean, that's a heck of a hit to the town by, by not having, I mean, is there any law stating that we had to reduce them or was it just strictly by our needs?
It's strictly, it's strictly a needs, a needs assessment, Mr. Council President. What the, what the law says is we're required to conduct this process every five years.
Can I point out one thing?
I was, the same.
Mr. President?
Yes, Nick, go ahead.
So, the impact fees are charged per additional lot of development, in essence dwelling unit. It could be that there are many, many more pieces of property to develop than we anticipated, but the fee is per unit, per lot. So, if you had more development than you might have anticipated at this, at the time you adopt this ordinance, you would have significantly more revenue from the impact fee ordinance itself. So, it's not fair to say that if you, that you've underestimated the cost because the cost is per unit. So, if you have more units than you anticipated, you're going to have a lot more revenue from the impact fee than you anticipated.
Yeah, I see Mr. LaBose today has, Jan, if you have something to say?
Yes, I do. I want to go just, the way it looks to me here, page 43 on that last page. So, from what I'm seeing is that we've got, it looks like 44,611,708 in capital needs. Is that what was, is that that number? And then the 31,308 would be the, any bond cost of, you know, of the debt, et cetera. So, now those total obviously the 75,920. And if, and I'm, from what I'm gathering, and it looks like that you, you came up with 50, with the amount 58,54 divided by the total number of households presently, not in the future. So, in other words, if each of those households were to have to pay their fair share of those capital needs at this moment, that's where the 58,54,43 came up. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so now it's assuming that as people build, obviously that share would actually go down as you added more people in there, if, assuming the capital needs and the bond structure stayed the same. So, so the lower impact fee is, is fair to me. It shows that, that if it were divided right now, that's what the cost of all of that would be individually to each of us. So, as we add households, again, the capital needs may change and again, these factors may change in the future, but at the present time, it looks to me like, like those numbers that were given and divided by each household come up with a fair amount, even though that adding, you know, it's, it's going to be, you know, taking money from the future as people build, but if this is the fair amount, this is in my eyes where it should go.
All right, thank you. It does, I see Councilwoman Dixon, you have your hand up, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I can't speak for other departments, but I can speak for the school department. I looked at their list, which is on page 39 of 43. I'm also on the school redesign team and we have identified a great number of capital improvements that are needed for the schools. In fact, we may be asking the council to approve us going to the voters for a bond. So, this list seems very inadequate to me based on all of the discussions that we have been having about the needs that have already been identified in each of the elementary schools, especially in the middle school and in the high school. Now, I know that this is a list that the school department has been circulating often based on their capital needs, but it doesn't necessarily take into account all of the needs that have been identified within the last few months based on the work that the consultants have done with this very large team of community representatives. So, I'm wondering if there is some opportunity to go back to the school committee and ask them if this list here, which is a very important list because it adds up, is part of the total, if this list is indeed a complete list, because if it's not a complete list, then the impact fee would be higher.
I think I can address that councillor. What, we could certainly go back and have the school department review the actual, the actual list of the roof replacements, retaining walls at specific school locations. As you know, I've been on the school building committee meeting, so I'm well aware of what you speak. When this report was prepared, the range of potential items to be covered by a bond ranged from a minimum of 42 million to a high of 127 million. So, obviously not knowing whether, you know, when this report was initially worked on, without knowing what, what the end result was going to be, we took an average and that's reflected in the report at assuming a bonded indebtedness of $85 million for all of the school improvements. As you point out, just based on what is being contemplated with the Allen Shawn Feinstein Middle School site, this number, you know, might well be adjusted up higher. Again, part of what we're trying to do and part of legally what we must do is conduct a, an assessment that's actually grounded in, in data. And, you know, it probably would be nice to be able to say, well, the schools need $150 million worth of work and to select that as a, as a bond amount. But as of right now and even earlier in the year when this report was finalized, I don't think it's safe to say that, I don't think the school department could safely say or reasonably say, we expect to go out to bond for, in excess of $100 million. But it's certainly something we can ask the school department to update.
I, I think it would be very reasonable to do so because this is a decision for five years. This is not a one-year decision. And five years means a lot in, concerning impact fees. But I also would like to ask a question. So, thank you for doing that, Mr. Arnett. So, maybe that means that we need to table this vote for, till the next meeting until we get more information, but that is up for the council to think about. But I'd like to ask Mr. Arnett, how much money did we actually get for impact fees in 2019 and how much have we got in 2020 thus far?
Those are really great questions. I haven't run the actual total number as far as how much has come in. I can tell you that there's a significant amount, there's over about $1.1 million sitting in impact fees right now that could be used. I, I can go pull that up if you would just, give me a couple of seconds, I can probably go run in.
That would be great because I have no concept here of how big a decision this is, how much money is coming in, what we got in 2019, what we've gotten so far. And I know this is an unusual year, but maybe going back a couple of years would be, would be helpful. But this reduction, as Mr. McGee started the meeting off of about $1,500, is a very significant amount of money, especially when there are some developments that are being contemplated that might be up to 92 condos or could be more. Center of New England might have some expansions. We never know what's going to happen within the next five years. So, to lower the impact fee without really having a full assessment, especially of what the school needs, I think would be doing a disservice to everyone.
Could I ask what the projected number of units over the next five years were? I mentioned the number that we did about 510 years. Is it more, you know, according to the numbers that I got, I believe, you know, so, I'm sorry, eight years from 2012 was about 500. What was the projected number of units for the next five years?
We did not project any units out for the next five years.
Oh, I thought, I mentioned, I thought that was.
No, 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 the, what was projected was the, the capital improvement funds from each department. There was no numbers that we projected for units.
Oh, okay, I thought that we were projecting number, I thought that was.
But, you know, if you wanted me, I mean, thinking in my head, Mr. Wazika, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just waiting. Dave, are we, are we not obligated to follow a formula by the state on how we calculate these numbers?
Well, we are obligated to, we're obligated to conduct a needs assessment and a needs assessment is driven by capital improvement projects identified by town departments and it's driven by, you know, expected and anticipated expenditures. So, to circle back to what Council Bacon had mentioned, you know, the, the numbers that drive this are numbers that are derived from town departments and that's, that's exactly what we did. I mean, you know, we have, we asked for and we received data from all town departments and we had to expect that those town departments are properly identifying their capital needs both now and over the next five years. And, you know, without being, without overstating it, a, you know, the police chief, for example, has to have an idea of how he or she needs to service the town, both presently and over the next five years. So, their capital expenditure plan would, would have to take into account replacing vehicles, updating vehicles, perhaps adding increased officers and the like. All of that would support or at least be supported by anticipated development within the town.
Thank you. Mr. Wazika, you have another question?
Dave, also, if, if, if that formula and way of doing it based on the needs assessment, if that's not followed in developing these fair share rates, does a developer have a likelihood of taking us into court and getting this thing held up and stopped because it's not being followed, following state law on how they have to be adjusted and calculated?
Yes, I mean, in, in short, if we don't follow the, if we don't follow state law in how we develop our fair share development fees, then the, the whole program is subject to attack by a developer who decides to mount a challenge to that, to that fee structure.
Mr. Arnett, I see you had your hand up.
Yes, I was just going to let you know, I pulled the, the actual numbers right now from last fiscal years. Fiscal year, last fiscal year was 223,503 and then the, that was from 2019. For 2020, we dropped down to 183,183.
Okay, thank you. You get that, Mr. Dixon. Okay, are there any other questions from the council or any other suggestions?
For 2019, would you repeat that number, please?
A moment, pulling that, back up. So, that fee is looking at last year for fiscal year 19, 223,503. And the other one for fiscal 20, I'm looking at 183,183.
Let me ask you this, Mr. DeGassino, if, what's the, the impact of if we decide, because it sounds like there might be some flavor to, to table this until they look into the department heads one more time and the schools to make sure that everything's understood and the correct fees are, what's the impact as you're in timeline, as you're deadline for us to get this done?
I, I think, Mr. President, if this is done by the end of the calendar year, we are in compliance. The, the statute contemplates a five-year review. As I said, the last review was done in 2015. If we adopt this as of 2020, then I think we are meeting our obligations under the statute.
Dave, if I might ask one more question on this. We've got a five-year capital improvement plan from each and every department that's already been, been part of the record. If we now go and change that and bring those numbers up higher, are we putting ourselves at risk for violating the law because we've already gotten it once and now we're saying we want to crank those numbers? And if we do that, are we not risking that with a developer?
Well, I mean, yeah, obviously we, we don't want to look like we're trying to cook the books. However, I would say as to councillor Dixon's point, just given the status of the school construction discussions, where they were back in February of this year versus where they are now, there's obviously a lot more plans, a lot, a lot more has been advanced and as, as she points out, there's a lot more that we know now. So, I can say at least with regards to the schools, I think there's probably an opportunity to refine that $85 million number and move that, move that up, especially given some recent discussions by the school building committee. So, you know, I, we don't want to look like we're cooking the books, but I think there's certainly an opportunity to take a look at the school side of things.
All right, well, what I, what I could do is, go ahead, Councilwoman Dixon, yes.
One more question. I mean, for example, I was looking at public safety and included in their capital improvement, they have five vehicles. It seems like we keep on improving, we approve two vehicles every year. I mean, their need for only five vehicles over the next five years, to me seems low based on what we've been doing recently for replacement vehicles. So, I mean, I can't look at every single number, I mean, the department heads know their, their field, what they need, but some of these numbers seem a little bit low based on what we have been doing and taking action on as a council over the last couple of years that I've been on.
Councilwoman Dixon, the five vehicles that are listed in here are not operational vehicles for their day-to-day work. That's over and above those numbers that we provide each year in the budget.
Okay, so what kind of vehicles are these then?
They would, they, I, again, I believe there would be things like trucks or additional unmarked units that they would use in specialty situations. They're, but again, that's in the, in the capital needs, it's, it's, it's over and above the two vehicles a year that they've been receiving. In theory, they've always wanted to be more in the line of three or four vehicles, that's what they used to receive and that's been reduced down. So, that's why I believe they put these five into there, they're over and above what they've been getting, which is.
To be, to be also included with those police vehicles would be detailed vehicles as well, which they usually roll through, but those are, those fleets are, are the issue as well.
Yep.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, thank you.
Welcome.
Yes, Mr. Gorm, a good question. Nick, if, I know this is supposed to be public hearing, a discussion, but if this matter gets tabled, can we postpone public hearing until the next time or when, when we've come through with some, after looking at this again? Be with an hour. Be within our rights. You unmute.
As long as you're going to have another meeting and public hearing before the end of the year, which you've indicated you'll do, I see no harm. We're just going to postpone the public hearing. I think it'd be best if you set a certain date, maybe the next council meeting.
I don't know if that's the flavor of the council. However, I don't see a need to open public comment up on it if we're not really ready with the figures and to give the right figures and then have a comment on it. So, okay. So with that being said, we've heard the explanation. Yes.
Carrie, it's Deb. Can I ask a couple more?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I can't see you, Deb, but yes.
I know. That's why I said something. Can I go forward?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I do want to make sure, Russ, Center of New England, how many thousands of homes, units were they approved for? What is that number?
3,000.
It's higher than 3,000.
I was going to say 3,100. So, yeah, 3,000.
Okay. So we need to make sure that the new chief, Chief Heiss, is aware of that. When I was on the negotiating team, we had a meeting with Central Fire, with the former chief of police, and no one was aware of how many units could be going into Center of New England. So we need to make sure that, especially the police department, that they are aware of it because they're going to be patrolling that area. And who knows if we're going to have kids in the school system? We don't know. So I want the school department. Craig Levis was also part of that meeting. So we need to make sure that they're aware of that. I have a question regarding the impact fees. If this should say pass and the number is what it is, the 5,854, it's lowered. How is that charged? Is it for the developers that are in prelim or master? Or is it, would it start with a brand-new application? How does that work? I don't know who to ask that question to.
Well, I'm going to just start it and see if Dave wants to finish it if he needs to. The fair share development fees, that fee is not due until immediately prior to the issuance of their certificate of occupancy. So I'm not sure if somebody is already in the pipeline in the subdivision process, I don't think those people get to take advantage. I think they would pay the new fee that's coming forward. I think it's when they apply for the building permit is when it would take place. Would you agree with that, Dave?
Yeah, I would agree that a developer who's already got a project that's been approved and whose impact fees have already been considered has to pay the impact fees that were part of their approval or their approved plan. So I don't, in other words, you're not going to have a developer who has a project already in the pipeline that can take advantage of the lower fee because their project was already approved under the existing fee structure.
Okay, so you're talking about anyone that would be new coming into this? This would be any type of a new development that?
So at such time as the council approves the new fee structure, that fee would apply to any development that came in subsequent to the adoption of the fee structure.
Dave, if I may, I'd like to follow up with Councilwoman Bacon's question. She just brought up the 3,000 units at Center of New England. Technically, Center of New England already has a master plan approval in place. They each, every time a new phase is developed, they now have to come back for preliminary and final before the planning commission. So are you saying that those 3,000 units are locked in?
I would think so. I would certainly take that position.
Okay.
As of right now, we have not, the council has not changed the fee status.
Okay, thank you. That's what I just wanted clarification on. All right. Can I just say, I feel as though we have a flavor to maybe look into this a little bit more and bring this back to the council at another date. That's what I'm assuming. But I'm going to open up to a motion to anybody who, you know, we've heard some different concerns and everything tonight, but I'm going to open up for a motion.
Carrie, can we have the public, have the public hearing in case there's anyone that's on that may have some input that would be helpful to our department heads?
I hope it'll be helpful to the department.
Continue the public hearing anyway, but if there's anything that we should be, I mean, it's not going to do any harm hearing from the public.
No, it isn't, but I just think that would be so much better if they knew the exact figure, just like we do, because the department heads are going to create that figure. So I don't know how much help it's really going to do. But I mean, I'm not opposed to having a public speak, obviously, but I just think it'll be much more productive if they knew what they, you know, had the figures and, you know, we will look at this again.
They know that there's no figures, but they may, like Center of New England, I mean, things like this. I just think it would be very helpful. There could be someone out there that has a question or a suggestion. I'm just asking that we do the public hearing. We're going to continue, hopefully, we continue it to the next meeting.
Well, all right. So we have a motion to open a public hearing. We'll do a public hearing. I'm fine. I don't, maybe I want to have the ability to speak. There's not, I want nothing to hide. We just, I just wanted them to have all the correct information before we do it, but I'm not opposed to that. So we have a motion over public hearing.
Motion open public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Madam Clerk?
Carrie McGee?
Yes.
Greg LaBorsen here?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Deb Bacon?
Yes.
Okay, public hearing is now open. Mr. Wazika, is there anybody looking to speak from the public?
Yes, we do. First on the agenda is Jen Ludwig. Jen, you could state your name, spell your name, and give your address, just for the record.
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, Jennifer Ludwig, 70 Tequod Drive. So thank you for opening public hearing. So I was a candidate in the recent election for District Two, and I knocked on hundreds and hundreds of doors over the last month or so. So one thing I will mention is the public concern for the amount of developers coming into the area. And as noted, as on the planning commission meeting approximately a week or so ago, Coventry as a whole, considering we do not meet the state's percentage of affordable housing, will continue being a place that developers come looking at. So it seems prudent that we take the time to go through and get the updated numbers as Ms. Dixon and Mrs. Dixon and Ms. Bacon have mentioned. Thank you for looking at that. I have been following the committee, and the bond is going to likely be substantial. And the average request there that Mr. D'Agostino had mentioned about 85 million, I believe, is too low based off of what those meetings have come in. So just from public perception of, you know, needing to look at those numbers, it seems absolutely appropriate. Thank you for that, and we'll be looking forward to hearing what some of the rest of those numbers are after the reconsideration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jen. Anybody else wishing to speak in the public, Mr. Wazika?
Yes, we have a Kim S. and I think I know who that is. One second, please. Unmute. Kim, if you would kindly state your full name, give your address, please, for the record.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, Kimberly Shockley, 12 Kingswood Drive. Once again, thank you, Ms. Bacon, for having public comment. I'm just curious, because I'm having trouble with the math. I understand that every department's putting out a five-year capital improvement plan, and then you're dividing those totals by the five years. I guess I'm having trouble with how you're dividing it out to get to the per-residence impact fee if you're not using a plan for how many units are going in over the next five years. And then I'm also wondering, it sounds like this is just capital improvement, so if we need more police, more senior center staff, more teachers, more public work staff, anything like that, that's not factored in here, right?
Mr. D'Agostino, would you have an answer on that?
That is correct.
Do we factor that in anywhere?
Not in the impact fees.
Okay.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
If I may, I'm sorry, Mr. President. The total number of households that we used, that number, we got straight from the tax assessor's office at the time we prepared this document. So those were hard numbers that we used, the 12, 9, 6, 8 households.
Oh, okay. So you use actual number of current residences as your denominator?
Households, not residents.
Residences, sorry, households.
I'm sorry, yes, Councilwoman.
Sorry.
Residences, yes.
Okay.
Units.
Perfect. That helps me. I needed a denominator, so thank you.
Okay. Are there anybody else, Mr. Wazika, who would like to speak in the public? Thank you, Kim.
Bradford Mayor, Brad, please state your full name, spell your last name, and give your address, please, for the record.
Sorry, must have raised my hand by accident. Sorry.
No problem.
Is there anybody else, Mr. Wazika?
That is it, sir. Just those two.
The chair would take a motion to close public hearing.
Before you do that, Nick, would it be better to just leave the public hearing open and that way we won't have to for the next meeting?
I don't think it's a big deal, open public hearing.
Well, no, it's for advertising.
I think you should leave it open. I think it's fine. So for the next meeting, advertise that there will be a public hearing again. We had, we opened it tonight. Best way to continue it is to simply advertise it again.
Okay. Mr. President, before we close it, I would just like to ask Mr. D'Agostino, Mr. Crossman, use the $85 million, and obviously, for the schools as an average, that, in other words, that's the number that we're going to be working on at this point. Where do you think, you know, the increase, you know, I mean, will it, do you feel as though by going back at it again, it'll increase it 10 million, 20 million, according to the discussions they've been having with the school building?
Well, so, just so everybody is aware, the way the analysis is done, and as Director Crossman pointed out, the total number is divided by the number of households in town as it currently exists. I think that the $85 million, I think we could probably go up 20 million to be around $100 million number and be safe and reasonable based on that, based on that amount, given the discussions that the school building committee has been having concerning proposed plans to develop the middle school site, both currently and also into the future, looking at turning those acres into a larger campus. Now, we obviously don't know if that's going to go forward, but certainly, we can take information from the school building committee and reasonably project that out and identify those costs. So, you know, the 85 million was an average from identified numbers from Studio Jade, as I said earlier, that were as low as 42 million and as high as 125 million. Over the last several months, different concepts have come out with corresponding increased costs.
Okay. But now, if you use that $100 million along with these calculations over here, the impact fees would drop to $7,396, $7,396.67, which is, what, $200, $200 less than they are now. That's what it would drop to if you used $100 million rather than, or go up $20 million. So it'd be $5 million. Is that correct? Or no, sorry, $100 million. The current number being used in the calculation is 3.358 million. According to the document, it's 3.358 million. So if we kick $100 million on, or an increase of 96.7, 96,700,000, those fees are going to skyrocket. It's not going to be at 7,000.
Not according to what's on that last page. If you use $85 million as the average for where they are with the school needs, and I'm sure that that must have something to do with the bond amount that you're working with, correct? Yes, it has. So the bond, but when you increase the bond by $20 million, it's not a straight-line increase because what the analysis calls for is the cost to the town of a bond at present rate. Present rate, thank you, John, 3.5% for 20 years, that's how it's calculated. But you also have to take into account the fact that currently the town of Coventry is eligible for a state reimbursement of up to 45% of any capital improvement dollars. So the numbers have to be, you know, just increasing the expected school bond amount doesn't directly mean we're going up vastly on the impact fee.
Okay, all right. I have an idea, and I have no problem with sending it forward until it can come up with that realistic number, which, again, maybe it moves it up only a little bit or not at all.
All right, so we're going to leave the public hearing open on the advice of a solicitor. And I'm seeing, I'm looking for a motion to either table this or.
Carrie, I just, sorry, I have one more question. It's Deb.
Yes, okay, Deb, go ahead.
I do have, I just want to make sure it's on page 42, 43. It seems that the figure that they're coming from is this, is this report dated 3/10/20, March 10, 2020? Okay, so I guess, you know, we've had, you know, some changes since then, but I know this was dated March 10, 2020. Why did it take so long? We're in November. Why did it take so long for this to get to the council?
I don't have an answer for that.
I can say it in one word, COVID. It's a lot of things going on, and we were working on this budget. And again, all the numbers come from the budget plans. But we are putting together a budget for fiscal year 20, as you're aware, in March has been a lot of those numbers are finalized. And then again, with everything else up and on, it took a while to get to this point.
Okay, so we've had some, you know, some major developments that have, you know, look like they're going to be taking place. So, you know, this is going to, you know, definitely change. So I just want to point that out, that this is, this information is old information at this point.
Yeah, we're on the, we're working to get this in front of council a while ago, and then, well, the world changed. So, yes, it is a little bit older information, but it was along the lines of the.
All right, with that being said, I'm getting the idea that we'd like to table this. I'm going to entertain a motion because.
I have one question. I'm sorry, Mr. McGee.
Yes, go ahead.
Ask Mr. D'Agostino, is it reasonable to expect that you'll be able to get more data or new data, more data, rework the numbers, and have a proposal for the council by its next meeting, November 23rd?
Yes, I'm going to immediately, working with Director Crossman and Director Annett, we'll reach out to the department heads and ask them for the updated numbers. I mean, that's what drives the information in this plan. It's not, it's not, it's not per se legal work. It's information from the departments.
Good.
But I will take, I will take an extra look at the school numbers, again, based on my familiarity with the travel of the school construction project.
Good. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, D'Agostino. So it seems like we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
This is the motion to table. We have a second. Madam Clerk, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Carrie McGee?
Yes.
Greg LaBorsen here?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Deb Bacon?
Yes.
Okay, motion is tabled. I think we have some more work to do to bring us back some updated numbers. So I appreciate that. If we, you know, get working on that in our next meeting, it should be ready, Mr. D'Agostino. Thank you very much. Okay, with that being said, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Wazika, is there anybody that would like to have public comment?
We have one at the moment.
Okay.
It's Jen, for the record again, just a name, full name, spelling, and address, please. Jen, are you there? Hello?
Jennifer Ludwig. Jen, Jennifer Ludwig, 70 Tequod Drive West. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I actually had two questions that I was hoping that someone might be able to answer. So, Mr. Wazika, I noticed there was a closing of Town Hall. I was wondering if you could just talk a little bit about how are residents, you know, able to come in and pay bills or ask questions? I know there is a Dropbox outside for, for taxes. Can they make an appointment to come in?
Nick, can I answer this?
You're on mute.
You're on mute.
I know. You missed my, ah, um, I think we're better off not answering that. It's definitely town business. And with all due respect to Councilwoman-elect Ludwig, it's a great question. But if we answer it, we're gonna get hit with an Open Meetings Act violation in all probability, and in all probability, we will lose.
Can I, can I just add that, Ms. Ludwig, we are a public comment. Yeah, we are not allowed to, to debate and answer questions, but we, that information you're looking for is available on websites and newspaper articles. So, you know, I, I don't want to get ourselves caught in a bind. So this is just basically public comment.
But isn't that just, just public information? We're not up for a decision on that.
Well, for, we used, we used to give district updates, but
Yeah. The, the standard imposed by the Attorney General lately is just a strict apply, strict adherence to, if the topic is not on the agenda, and it's discussed, and an Open Meetings Act violation is filed, we will lose. That is something I can almost assure. Even if it's public information that could be learned outside of the meeting, it doesn't matter. So to err on the side of caution, it's an excellent question. I wish we could answer it. But it would be, in the Attorney General's estimation, a violation of law.
I'm sure. So I did have one other thing that maybe I can just make a comment on, you know, because for the same reason, it would be not on the agenda. Based off of last week's Kent County water issues, it looks as though there have been a number of neighbors, I believe it's, you know, more than, more than just District Two, but at least I've been hearing about from District Two, some neighbors that are concerned about water bills that have come in. There have been some conversations through social media, and I will reach out to Councilman LaVosner offline to see how we might be able to aid Gordon Rogers and some of the other senators slash representatives in our district. I don't have any answers for any of the public who's listening here, but maybe we can help direct people to the right location. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jen. Okay, Mr. Wazika, is there anybody else in the public who would like to speak?
That is it at this time, sir.
The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. I'm moved. We have a motion to adjourn, and we have a second. All in favor, Madam Clerk?
Carrie McGee?
Yes.
Greg LaVosner?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Deb Bacon?
Yes.
The meeting is adjourned. Everybody stay safe, and we'll see you at the next meeting. Thank you.